Start the. All right, I'm going to call to order the town of Andover Board of Selectmen Regular Meeting for January tenth, two thousand and twenty-two, our first meeting in the new year. And this meeting is being held by Zoom. I'm calling me in order, and we're gonna start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, and now we're gonna move on to a public speak. And we'll start with Elaine Buchart, if you'd like to say something.
Hi, yeah Jed Larson and I are gonna be doing a presentation tonight, so I think that'll be enough time. Thanks.
And Jed, I'll move to you if you'd like to say anything before your presentation. Jed's good. All right, Diane Grunier.
Well, I'm all set. Just Happy New Year to everybody. Twenty twenty-two is better than the last two.
So Diane Choquette.
I'm good, thanks.
All right. Thanks for joining us. I'm Leanne Hutchinson. Okay, and Mike and Kathy Palazzi.
I'm fine.
I'm fine for now. I might have something come up later on.
All right. I think I went through everybody there, so we'll move on to the next part. Item three, additions and deletions to the agenda. Anyone have anything to add to the agenda? Who wants to see go away?
Yeah, I want to add an executive session for employee discipline policy.
Yes. Anyone want to second that?
Second.
Yeah, you're still on mute.
Okay, so we got Eric on mute. Good. Okay. Well, before we vote on that one, I'd like to add one thing to it. It's a very simple thing. I would like to talk about establishing a plodging day in Andover.
Oh, what?
I had to ask Eric to put plodging, the plodging day in Andover on the agenda, and he failed to do it. So I would add it to the agenda. Plodging and garbage pickup.
Can I add one thing? Can we move discussion of items eleven, twelve, and ninety to after four while Sherri Holmes is here? Can we do all that stuff early?
Sure.
That's fine.
Okay, and then.
Did you get a second on your plodging day?
No, no one seconded it. I can't believe it.
Could you spell it, please?
I'll second it, Jeff. I'll second it for you.
I'll second it if you can spell it.
P L O G G I N G. It's a Scandinavian activity regarding athletic exercise related to garbage and pickup, garbage maintenance, I believe, related to.
Oh, God.
Okay, so would we like to vote on adding those two items to our agenda? Let's go for the discussion. All those in favor, bye. Okay.
Bye.
All right.
I object that you lumped mine in with yours, so yours would pass, though. I'm just gonna say that right now.
Well, mine is a lot easier than yours. Mine will take five minutes.
All right.
So we're gonna move on to item four, board and commissions presentations. We have Elaine Buchart and Jed Larson here to represent planning and zoning, the Economic Development Committee, recommendation for a town planner and an economic development coordinator. So one, one quick thing, if everyone could please mute themselves when they're not speaking, it helps our meeting go quickly and doesn't give us any interference. All right, Elaine and Jed, who would like to go first? Jed, you have. Yeah, we have to get you to unmute yourself. So there's two, three little buttons. There you go. At the top of your screen, your little window. And then it says next to it, Jed, it says mute, unmute.
The problem is Jed is unmuted. We're just not getting any sound.
Jed, can you restart and come back into the meeting? Okay, Elaine, you get to start off. Let's go.
Sure. All right. In your presentation package, I believe we have a PowerPoint that was sent to you. And basically, it starts off, and, and there was, it was updated today. You got like a newer one today, and basically, it should start out Andover's two thousand and fifteen P O C D Chapter One Statement of Issues and Opportunities. And it talks about Andover has tremendous potential to define itself as a unique place in the region. Andover is an affordable, attractive, and almost crime-free location for those working in the Hartford region and looking for more rural setting. The town is interested in promoting a type of development which is sustainable, environmentally friendly, and preserves the town's rural landscape. And this is the first paragraph from the two thousand and fifteen P O C D. Wants you get past the legal basis introduction. And he goes, I'm not gonna read the slide to you, but I just did. That's what gets when I do it. Okay, but Andover is, it's a great place to live, and we have tremendous potential. Now.
Excuse me, Elaine, can you hear me now? Or am I still?
Oh, yeah.
Yes, we can.
Okay, that's good. And, and so with that, then Amanda, can you allow me to share my screen?
Go ahead, Jed.
Okay, so hopefully you can see the presentation and you can hear me. And with that, I don't know how far Elaine got, but you know, we all know this year's budget will be difficult, and adding new items to the budget will be a tough sell. Our thinking is that these are not new ideas, but are rather old actions that we've yet to complete. In fact, Andover had a town planner in the past, and I'm not sure why we did away with the position. But I imagine that in an effort to keep taxes from rising, that probably had something to do with that. At a town budget meeting two years ago, somebody asked the question, what is the town doing to increase revenue such that we can maintain quality town services in our school while keeping the mill rate at a reasonable level? Elaine and I think that hiring a town planner and economic development coordinator is a big part of the answer to that particular question. This is the first paragraph from Andover's last plan of conservation and development done in two thousand and fifteen.
I read that one, Jeff, Jed.
Okay, yeah. And once you get past the legal stuff, first, first paragraph in that big document talks about the tremendous potential that Andover, Andover has. Andover is a great place to live, but there's an awful lot of potential that can make it even better. Hopefully, Elaine, you didn't get onto this one yet. But this was the very last paragraph from the Plan of Conservation and Development. And it starts off by saying, the plan identifies a number of recommendations which will be very difficult for a volunteer commission like planning and zoning to implement. After the plans formally adopted, the commission should seek funding to retain professional planning assistance, and there's, you know, a couple of things there. While, while the plan, you know, specifically mentioned planning and zoning commission, Elaine feels the same thing is true for, for economic development, and she needs a little assistance there, too. Most towns have, you know, staff member that's a planning, the officer and the economic development coordinator. So without getting into, you know, the, the Plan of Conservation Development is probably a hundred pages long, what were we specifically looking to do? And we recognize that while the town population is not growing, and, and the population is getting older, we'd like to do some things that could attract younger families to move into and live in Andover. And that's what a town planner does. We'd also like, we know from surveys, what, what the people in town are looking for, for businesses in, in our area. And so if we had an economic development coordinator working with that town, in a fit, town planning or official, we'd be able to develop and implement the marketing strategies designed to attract the commercial businesses to town. The Plan of Conservation recommends development over a town center. As I drive through Hebron on Route sixty-six, I see the, the development there starting to spread back away from Route sixty-six. So they've got a lot of the, the busy road open so that you can see what's there. And that gets into our people, and Andover want to protect our rural character. And we want to prevent the development of this strip mall kind of development along Route six and protect the farm views that, that are so great for what, what we in Andover have. So that's, that was what are the, the big takeaways for us in the planning, conservation, development. In two thousand and nineteen, the, the town formed a long-term planning committee. And the purpose is listed here, but it was trying to shift the focus of what we were looking at from a short-term mindset to establishing long-term goals to guide the growth of Andover. And several people that are here tonight were, were on that commission when we put that into effect a couple of years ago. Here are two of the recommendations from the long-term plan. There's a lot of the recommendations we've already put into effect. But we said, you know, these weren't new ideas. These were just old ideas we hadn't got around to implementing yet. And the first one is Andover should fund an economic development coordinator. And it's got some rationale for why that's so. Then the other, the other recommendation was to hire a part-time individual. It says for sixteen hours a month is the town planner with the potential job sharing as the economic development coordinator. As I was reviewing the material and trying to get ready for tonight, I, I saw that it said sixteen hours per month, and I said, oh my, I, I put a typo in there. That's gotta be sixteen hours per week. And I called, called Elaine up and, no, I went back to the original document, and, and sure enough, it, it said sixteen hours per month, which was lower than I was thinking. You don't get much for four hours a week. But if that were to be combined with the economic development coordinator, you know, another sixteen hours a month, Elaine and I were looking, it would, would be optimum would be to have forty hours a month or ten hours a week dedicated to planning and economic development, we could really do the town a lot of good. So anyhow, this, this slide, I apologize, it was not in the original package that I sent out. I think it did get added, added today. But as I was thinking through this, I said, well, we haven't come up with any punchline, you know, to, what is it that we're really looking to do? So I, I added this slide. You know, we're now starting to work on our state-required affordable housing plan. The state has set a requirement that all towns have ten percent of their housing be affordable as defined by the state. And while I consider Andover to be an affordable town to live in, in most of our houses that have sold over the last several years are within the price guidelines of what the state considers affordable. The state also requires that any affordable housing have a forty-year deed restriction on that property so that it will never get, due to inflation or whatever, to be unaffordable. We were talking about attracting the commercial businesses to Andover for services most desired by the residents. Again, that's what the economic development coordinator would do hand in hand with the town planner. And we realize Andover's tremendous potential to find itself as a unique place in the region. Already a great place to live, but the other towns that have full-time planners, economic development coordinators are, are going to be finding themselves more attractive than we are. And, and there are things that we should do to make Andover better and, and provide an increased tax base to keep the mill rate under control. And so I think it's a smart, cost-effective solution. So with that, thank you for listening, and Elaine and I are here to answer any questions you might have. Jed, thank you very much.
If you guys. Actually had a few other points to make, just to bring up, because, you know, hi- history-wise, I've done a lot of work with planning and economic development for years. And I just, I did want to mention, years back, we had the L A D A company work with the regional Route Six E D C to come up with an economic development plan for Route Six coordinated with Bolton, Coventry, and Columbia. And we have a good comprehensive plan that came out of that. There was a zillion hours of work that got put into it. And we need someone whose job is to pick up those plans and take a good look at them and try to figure out how we can move forward on some of the very good ideas that had come out of it. CROG went ahead and worked with the Department of Transportation, and they use those L A D plans as their core. And then they went ahead and refined it to come up with plans to create some traffic calming along Route six. And once again, this D O T plan act needs to be picked up by a town planner to go ahead and work on. And, and I'm, as E D C Chair on the Talon County Chamber of Commerce, E D C, and I sit at a table with full-time Talon County town employees who are planners and economic development personnel as well as business leaders in the county. And that's where I heard about and was able to bring in Sustainable Connecticut to our E D C group. And then Kathy Palazzi now runs the Sustainable Connecticut Committee, trying to report on coordinate the efforts of different town groups and communicating to us what Sustainable Connecticut says that we should be working on. And there should be a town employee that is working with the group to make sure our projects are working toward the town's long and short-term goals. Finally, Ca- Catherine McGoldy Lewis has reached out to UConn. And we are now being linked up with the Planning and Development Class this fall, two thousand and twenty-two, to assist with the planning projects for our town. And if we had a planner, then we would have this, the students working directly with that person. We're linking Eric Anderson up with the professor and students to see what can be done. And these students are potential future planners when they graduate. And Patrick and I, Patrick Dory and I, Dordy and I are working on the Welcome to Andover signs, which we keep trying to get funded so that we can have some kind of gateway marketing for the town of Andover. And it would be great if the town had an employee, an economic development coordinator, that we could bounce ideas off of and, and work with toward these kinds of projects. So, so basically, creating a part-time position for town planner and economic development coordinator, it's, it's a necessity. It's not just a want if we're ever gonna move forward on any initiatives that have shown up in our plans for years. That's it. Say my keys.
All right. Thank you very much. Do any of the members have any questions for either Jed or Elaine?
Yep, I've got a couple of questions. Thank you to both you for, you know, bringing this forward tonight and, and presenting. You know, we're getting into our budget season, and, you know, it's gonna be tight. So my, my question, and Elaine, you, you might have already answered it, but I just wanted to understand. So you said the UConn students would possibly work with this person? Now, I, I haven't come to any of the meetings, but I thought that the UConn students were, the committee was looking into them to actually come up with some ideas. So am I misunderstanding that in conversations with other committee members, or?
It's, it's, it's a double-edged sword. We would, because Eric has come up with a list of things that, you know, some initiatives and stuff that really, you know, would be nice to look into. We would present that to the students and go ahead and explain whatever questions, you know, go over the town, whatever questions they have about things that have, you know, how things work in town. And then they would go ahead and run with those ideas and see what they can come up with as projects. But honestly, none of this has been defined for us, Paula, so we don't know a hundred percent of exactly how this process is gonna work. And that's where, you know, if, like I said, if we had a town planner, that would be great, because they would certainly be the people that would be working with these kids. But we have Eric. We have a town administrator who wears all the hats at this point in time. So he's gonna be the one that's gonna be working with them. And we'll, you know, we'll get more definition as time goes on of exactly what their prospectus is, you know, what it is they, they're looking into. You know, we're flexible. We're, we're just thrilled that someone wants to come in and put in some energy into our town for planning. It's like, okay, but we did present to them that we didn't have a planner. We did present to them that we were, you know, we need help.
So the student, the students wouldn't be doing the research. They would, and I know you said this is.
Yeah, I'm, I don't know. I don't know what kind of research that they're capable of doing. They, you know, they probably have more resources, being a state, you know, university than we have to go ahead and look into things. They might even be able to come up with some great ideas of funding, things like that. Because it's, they're learning how to do.
I mean, I, I think the fundamental problem is that we're not really, we're not really set up to grow as a town. We don't have, we do not have the infrastructure. I mean, we're having a hard enough time keeping up with the infrastructure we have. Never mind the idea of adding infrastructure, right? I mean, the, the one good thing that we have is we do have, we do have high voltage power, so we can access that. We have three-phase power in certain areas, mostly Route six. But beyond that, we don't have gas, we don't have water, and we don't have sewer. And that's really, I mean, those three things are, are what makes or breaks town development, you know? I mean, if you look at our surrounding towns, Hebron, for instance, you know, you, they put in a well system to have some water. They got gas because they had the school. And those things allowed them to do the development that they're doing. That's, that's how they got what they have, even though it was on sixty-six. If they didn't have those things in place, they wouldn't have it. You know, Columbia has been fortunate in that they were close enough to be able to tie into Wollamantic sewer, you know? Bolton went ahead and put gas in, whereas we in Andover rejected that as, as a town. So we, we, as a town, our town has never voted for the things that it needs to be a growth town, you know? I mean, we rejected gas, and I, I'm not picking side on gas when we don't. I'm simply saying that it's, it's one of those things that, that helps growth, right? Water, sewer, power. So I, the idea of having a town planner who's then gonna tell us, well, we need all these things. We already know we need them. But the town doesn't want to spend the money to put them in. I mean, we're having a hard enough time maintaining our roads with the budget that we have. And that's what small rural committees deal with, you know? You know? Well, you're talking a twenty-five thousand to fifty thousand dollar investment to get the number of hours that you're talking about, you know? And I don't know that we're ever gonna see that back. And we would have to start as a town making completely different decisions that we're making now, you know?
Jed, I have a question for you. Has the plan and zoning ever sat there and identified town properties that you think would be beneficial for development? Those, there have been several pieces of property in the two thousand and fifteen Plan of Conservation and Development. Planning and zoning commission has not done anything since that document came out. One of those pieces of property is, and I forget the name of the subdivision. It's at the corner of Route eighty-seven and Route six.
Outlink Home Block Corners.
Yeah, where, you know, a guy came to our last planning zoning meeting and talked about his desire to buy that property to put a winery in there and, and hold events. So that would take one of, I think, the four places that are in the Plan of Conservation and Development out of the running. But I do think that with those parcels that are still in there in the town center concept, there, there are places that we could look at to develop and hopefully have a mixed-use development that would bring in some, some more affordable housing with some development and and help out the town there. I think, you know, the town is looking to have some sort of growth. I guess the other thing that, you know, people are probably aware of is that we just subdivided the piece of property over where Franklin Plumbing is in in that, that parcel close to, close to Route six that's been subdivided off is, is gonna be developed for something, and I'm not exactly sure what. But that's, you know, a piece that's coming further down the road. As it's a gravel bit across the street next to the gas station there.
Yeah, and the L A D A plan that came out years ago, there are quite a, there, there's a whole village node that they talk about that involves the, you've got the Public Works Department, the library, the church, and, and that area, and potential for development there. They talk about, according to, you know, Adrian was talking about sewer. They talk about the possibility of having pack, packaged septic systems for a, a small area of development. You can have your own little septic system as opposed to individual septics for every single building. But that exists out there, too, as a possibility. Because, yeah, we are never gonna have sewers, and we know that, but that's no reason why not to go ahead and still go ahead and approach development that can be done on a much smaller scale, of course. But, you know, we, we all have our houses with our septic and our well, you know, it, it, it exists. You can get that. So the package. To look into.
I think, Elaine, that Route six program, if I remember correctly, had, back when it was completed, it had approximately a twelve or thirteen million dollar funding requirement, which I'm assuming right now is probably doubled. So it would definitely, we definitely have to think bigger and better, but there are certain things that we're gonna have to take into account as to how we do them.
Right.
You know, I, I can tell, I can tell you that we explored with developers when I was on the Board of Finance. We actually started going out and talking to developers, and I had some friends being in the construction industry that are already development that were willing to come and take a look at some of the bigger parcels that were had in town, some that weren't even on the market. And when we looked at them and talked to the sanitarium at the time, the, the biggest issue is a lot of the things that you would want to do something with fall within the floodplain. So you, you can't really, if it's on the riverside. If it's on the other side, there just wasn't enough to work with there. You know, we were looking at a mixed-use development where you do something, you know, to try to, this was actually before the state, because this was, I was on Board of Finance. You're talking four years ago, the state had some really amazing money out there to be able to do mixed-use development where we could, if we were willing to build, you know, mixed-use low-income homes, you could have, you know, some high-end, some middle, some low income, and then do retail attached with it. But there just wasn't enough room to do a septic package for that type of development. There, there just isn't enough space. You end up burning up more space than you have available, you know? So, I mean, and look at the Andover Plaza. That's the whole reason that Plaza has struggled, is that they don't have room to expand the septic system. You know, so they can only have a part-time restaurant in the opening that they have. You know, the Chinese place has to be takeout because the, the, the currently set up, you know, is, is for Andover, you know, Andover, you know, pizza, right? So if they had more septic, they could actually have a, a full-time restaurant there besides Andover Pizza, but because of that, they're limited, you know?
This is something that we as a board should try to assist in, in ways that are possible and try to find something that may work. And, you know, I am not sure, I'm not sold that spending the money on a planner is.
Um I'm not sold that spending the money on a planner is. Is going to solve our problems, but uh it's definitely something that we should evaluate. So if any other members of the board have other questions, feel free. Scott?
All set, thank you.
Jeff Murray, I'm not sure if he's on the phone still right now, but he's coming back.
I'm all, I'm all set, I'm all set, Jeff, thanks.
Right, thank you.
Just one comment before we leave this topic, and that would be, you know, I've been the chairman of the Planning and Zoning Commission. For a couple of years now. And certainly I thought that I would be able to devote some time to working on these planning kind of things. Is that job, in that job? And it's become clear to me over the last couple of years with the regulatory changes coming from the state and. In the activity that we do have going on and in the changes that need to be made to the regulations and that, that I will certainly. I don't expect to ever be able to devote the time that would be necessary to make any of those projects a success. And so that's what led me to.
Elaine or Eric, do you know, you were saying you've done some things with CROG. Do you know if there's any? You know, option to 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 get services through CROG? Or shared services through CROG for this types of thing?
So some of the other COGS have uh like staff municipal planners that they farm out. CROG really does not, not available for the towns. You would have to go out and find a surrounding town that had a planner that had excess time. That's your only real. You know, and and that's common, like a lot of planners are not, a lot of smaller towns don't have the resources to hire a full-time planner. Because the reality is a good planning professional makes more than a hundred thousand dollars a year. Um so we're certainly not gonna hire a full-time person. Um so it would have to be somebody like. I don't know that John Pedini is still working, but he would have been a perfect one. Um you know, or Bill Warner or something of that nature. You know, somebody that's got a, a, you know, a most time gig in a different town, but is willing to devote one day a week to to Andover. That would be your only real approach that would work.
Thank you. Well, I thank you both for your time and for your, you know, commitment to the town and all the hard work you do. So Elaine and Jed, thank you very much and and. You know, we do at this board understand it's a thankless at some points in time, but we do appreciate all your efforts. Um let's uh move on. We said we would move Eric to eleven, twelve. Eleven and twelve. What was the other section you wanted to go?
Uh the other would be nine B budget, if there's anything there uh that you wanna review tonight. I know this isn't, budget isn't a primary focus of this meeting, but we sent you some documentation. If there's anything you wanna discuss. Regarding uh nine B, while you have myself and Sherry here now would be a perfect time.
Okay. Alright, uh so Boyd, we're gonna move to nine B. And talk about the budget first, the format and overview, the workshop schedule, the budget preliminary data and the permanent funds discussion. We were provided. Uh a certain amount of information, I believe it stretches. Pretty far. Where does that start, Eric? I was trying to find the starting point for all of that information.
So it starts around page twenty-four.
Twenty-four, twenty-five?
So twenty-four is the very preliminary text for a budget book. Um I don't really wanna go through that whole thing tonight. If there are anything there that the Board of Selectmen wants changed or modified, let me know. Um you know, or if you have suggestions on format for the budget book and what else you wanna see displayed. You know, for that. My intention was this year to put out both a budget book. As well as the the standard Excel worksheet that we always put out uh for the budget.
So, so we're not using the software for the budget this year? We're gonna use Excel again?
Correct.
Okay. Alright, so that goes from page twenty-five to page sixty-three, I think. Oh, maybe even further, goes further. Okay, go.
So if you don't have, if you don't have specific comments on that, we can move past that. Um. You know, I also put in there uh a set of, you know, after talking to various people. A set of uh what I would say kind of big picture. You know, things for personnel changes for the twenty twenty-two budget. That's on, starts on page sixty-six of the packet. Um you know, and what I wanted to do is, I don't wanna build something into the budget if you guys are just gonna shoot it down anyway. So what I wanted to do is have that discussion early. So when we present a budget to you on the seventeenth or send a budget to you, actually on the eighteenth. Because as Sherry reminds me, the seventeenth is MLK Day. Um we get a budget that's close to uh what you'll accept or wanna start with.
Well, something that I would like to do is at the beginning of this whole. Presentation, let's go over the uh a calendar for everybody's purposes. Oh, when I went through that, let's find that.
Can we not jump around to four things here? Like, you guys are going in one direction then another.
No, he's just, he went through the budget book, Adrian.
I know, and now you're jumping up, now you're jumping to.
I just wanted to go through the schedule. How's that? Are you okay with that?
I'm just frustrated because you're jumping around.
Oh, okay. But alright, so the schedule says uh the week of December sixth, budget worksheets attributed to department heads and chairs. I'm assuming that happened. And did you get all of your budgets back to the finance office on the January third deadline?
We did not, but we got, you know, at this point, we have most of them back.
Okay, and so you're gonna distribute to us on the eighteenth of January a budget workbook.
Correct.
Alright, um and we had, I I believe at the last meeting scheduled all of our budget workshop meetings. Is that accurate, the board members?
Uh no, you made a decision that you were going to schedule them at this meeting because you didn't wanna do it at the last.
Okay, let's look at our calendars. Does anybody have any problems? Uh Adrian, since uh you are Board of Finance Liaison, when do you wanna do this? Because you have the fullest schedule.
Um what page are your day, your suggested days on? I was on sixty-seven looking at your personnel changes.
There's no selected days.
I thought there was a list somewhere in there.
No, I mean, I mean, the only goal was to have the budget. Through the Board of Selectmen and ready for the Board of Finance on February twenty eighth or thereabouts.
Okay, so how many, how many days are we spending on this? I guess that's question number one. And when do you wanna start?
We can start as soon as everybody here agrees to the first day. So we can't really start until we get our. Budget workbook on the eighteenth. So when would you like to start?
So we'll have a budget workbook next week, Eric?
Yep.
So why don't we start on the twenty-fourth, do Mondays? We can do them Zoom.
Okay. For the record, the, for the first Monday, the twenty-fourth, I will be on vacation.
Do they have internet service where it go?
I've no, I don't have no idea what state or country I'm gonna be.
Can we do, is the um. Let's do the first one without Eric and will. Excuse me?
I said, no, why not? That sounds like a great idea. I'm agreeing.
Cool. So the twenty-fourth, let's do that. Sherry, can you attend the twenty-fourth?
Yes.
Great. And then Eric, will you be back on the thirty-first or no?
I hope so.
Okay, so. Twenty-fourth, the thirty-first, the seventh, and the fourteenth, and then we're at Eric's deadline.
Twenty-fourth is planning and zoning.
We'll do him, we'll do him Zoom.
Do you have, I mean. Uh Scott, do you want to go to planning zoning? Is that what you're saying?
I I would say I should attend planning and zoning also.
I mean, Scott, we can, we can hold any, we can hold any motions from that night to the next meeting if there's something for you. So you can be part of the discussion. Would that work?
Can the first meeting be on the twenty-fifth then, if he has that? Does it really impact anybody that badly Tuesday?
No, I can make that work. Murray, Jay, King?
Jeff Murray?
I can do the twenty-fifth.
Yeah, whatever, whatever you.
So we're talking twenty-fifth, thirty-first?
Seven o'clock.
Does anybody need more time? We can do seven-thirty if they wanna start later, whatever, earlier.
No, let's do seven, please.
So twenty-fifth, thirty-first?
Okay, the fourteenth gentleman is Valentine's Day, so you should be.
Working hard for our town?
Well, Adrian, you were the one that had a problem with it when we talked about it on the schedule for a Board of Select meeting, so you should be backing me up on this.
Actually, don't we have a Board of Select meeting that day?
No, we moved it, I thought.
Does anyone have that calendar in front of them?
Uh a second, hang on. Well, it's on the fifteenth. She's right, it is a national holiday, so.
So let's do that one on the sixteenth, and then Eric said that you wanted it. That you were looking for the budget to be backed to you by what date?
Not to me, to the Board of Finance, by the around the twenty eighth, February twenty eighth.
So do we need a meeting on the sixteenth? We could have one on the twenty-first instead.
Well, why don't we, um why don't we finish it up by that date? So we got one meeting scheduled for the twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fifth.
I'm sorry, twenty-fifth.
Thirty-first.
Thirty-first.
Seventh.
Last seventh. And then. The sixteenth, how's that one? So back-to-back meetings.
Yeah, that's why I'm wondering if we should do the twenty-first. Do we need more than four days? There's the question.
Well, we're gonna find out pretty quickly on the meeting after the twenty-fourth. So the first one that. Eric is back for, it's gonna determine whether we're gonna need more.
Why don't we just hold those dates and then as we, as we move along, we can say maybe we'll take the sixteenth away. It's easier to kinda get it in in everybody's mind and then take them away rather than adding.
Okay.
So the four days you've selected so far, the twenty-fifth of January, thirty-first of January, the seventh and sixteenth of February. Am I correct?
Yep.
Okay.
And we, we talked about the twenty-first because if we wanted to take the sixteenth away. Then the twenty-first might be a better idea, so we're not back-to-back that week.
Yeah, let's put a two-hour cap on them too.
Absolutely.
So everything you said, Eric, and and then add in February twenty-first too.
Alrighty, Amanda, you got that? Can you schedule those?
Yes, all set.
Thank you.
Thank you, Amanda.
Anyone else have a problem with the two-hour cap?
No, I think it's a good idea.
Jeff Murray? Scott?
Sounds good.
I'm good.
Give me one second, I've been kicked off of the computer.
Are you gonna go over your uh, the budget book stuff that you've put out right now or? Is that, are we going over that at all tonight?
I was gonna suggest individually or collectively, if you have comments or things you wanna add to it, you send them. Because that things, that's sixty-something pages long, so I don't think we can practically discuss it at a meeting. Um I would prefer you just send me individual edits if you so choose. Or areas you want me to concentrate on.
I'm just looking at the the bond adjustment for RAM. We've got listed as a million dollar adjustment. It's actually one point four million, I think. Because the the town effect shouldn't be two fifty, it should be like three seventeen, something like that.
Okay, you want me to review the bond?
Yeah, for for RAM, I'm pretty sure it's like one point three seven million. Because I, I'm pretty sure Andover share of it was like three and change, three seventeen, three twenty.
I put the bond schedule, the actual bond schedule on there, right from the RAM site. So the bond is. Yeah, it reduces, payment reduces from two point five million to one million and change. Net savings of one point forty-one million.
Yeah.
Which nets Andover two hundred and fifty-two thousand at today's percentage, roughly. I mean, our percentage next year will be a little different anyway, so that's not an exact number.
Okay.
Okay, so Eric, you, uh I'm assuming that this budget book was prepared by you and. Um next week, we're going to get the Excel spreadsheet.
Correct.
Okay. What do other members want to go over related to this?
We, are we gonna have anything from John so we can update our numbers?
John who?
Japonas.
John Japonas. We normally will have a grand list right around February first. So the the long and the short answer is no. When you first get the budget, you are not going to have an accurate grand list to work on.
Okay. But we will have one before we roll this over to BOF.
Yeah. By somewhere around February first, you'll have an accurate grand list to work with.
Okay. I'd like to kinda shy away from making major decisions until after we see that grand list and just sort of scope out what we're looking at for adjustments personally.
That really, you know, we're not gonna be able to get anywhere if we're doing that. We we have to decide what we're thinking of, like. You know, I'll use Paul as analogy. It's it's easy to take things away, but you better have your ideas laid out as to what we would like to fund and not fund.
I I think, I think we can run a, we can have a scope of what we feel like we can address.
No problem. I mean, listen, we have to sit there and. You know, even if we decide not to, we should sit there and and take into account the planner, and then if we have to. Put the planner out there and decide that the planner is not, you know, worth the money that we would spend on it, we we don't do it, but. You know, it also goes into the whole issue of the senior center and putting in someone.
Community center.
The community center, uh putting in a community center director uh and related to recreation. So there's lots of things that we should talk about, things that we would all potentially, or some of us would like to see put in place and. And pull them apart. They don't get in, they don't get in.
Can't stop talking about it.
Yeah, we can't sit there and wait on the grand list, even the grand list, it matters and it doesn't matter, only, you know, if we decide we're gonna spend an extra million dollars, well then that million dollars gets spread around the entire grand list, it's just a question of what we're willing to put out there to the community, then.
I think the grand list matters a lot personally.
Yeah, it, it, it does, Adrian, but it's not gonna stop us from making any decisions. What's it gonna stop you from making a decision whether you fund something or not because the residents are taxed too much on it?
I think you, you put forward a budget that you, you know you need. And you reasonably believe you, you reasonably believe you can pass, I think those are two important attributes of a budget.
Okay, I, I have no problem with it. So we start with the basics and then we sit there and say, okay, here are add-ons, and then the add-ons can't make it because we can't fund it. That's what's happened every year we've ever done a budget.
Alright, we'll figure it out. We'll just run with it.
Okay. Alright, does anyone have any questions related to this, to Sherry? Okay, so I have a question. So Sherry, uh, admins is not going to be used as the primary driver related to the budget?
Not the primary one, because I was told that you wanted it just the same as last year, and that's what I'm trying to do, is keep it just the same.
Who said that?
Well, the Board of Finance is.
My Board of Finance wants the spreadsheet, so um, that's what I'm trying to produce, um, the, but the spreadsheet that they had last year exactly the same way.
They're, they're asking for a document they can manipulate, Jeff.
Okay.
So they're, for, for their purposes, that's Excel at this point, cause I don't, I don't think we have a I don't think we have a budget planning document within admins that they can access at this point, so.
Well, it looks different than what you have currently.
Well, and then we'd also have to get them access to it, right? We'd have to get server access.
Right.
So.
Okay, so, um, by the 18th, we'll have that document?
Correct.
Yes, correct.
Alright.
This is my first go around, so I wanna, uh, make it a little bit smoother on me and then get right down. You know, if there's things that you want to revise, I can certainly make note of that as I move forward. Um, I feel like the next year would be a time to make any changes that you wish to have done differently.
Well, from my perspective, from my perspective, Sherry, the one thing is, you know, I don't mind Excel, I always thought we would utilize some version of it, but if we're not maximizing use of admins, then we're under where our return on our investment is poor, and that's all I'm after, so, um. You know, we'll go, we'll go through that, so, okay, so let's get through the budget and, and deal with.
Can I ask a structural question I never really paid attention to, and this is sort of sad? Our, our bond payment for the school is actually on the town budget, right?
Correct.
The bond payment for the AES
Right.
is on the town's budget.
Is on the town's budget.
Hmm, correct.
Okay.
That's because the town physically owns the property. So that's all, it's almost always bonded at the town level, not at the school level, not always, but generally.
No, that, that's fine. I was just thinking in terms of the school benefiting from the fact that it's been paid off in terms of their budget, that's all.
Yeah, it doesn't directly really.
Doesn't directly, again.
Their budget, because it's not in the AES budget.
Okay. Alright, so we understand our, go ahead, Sherry.
I do have one question, um, I am likely to get more requests as we go along, ho- hopefully not, but, um, I need to know how you wanna um, address like letters that come from the Intervall House, for instance. It's, um, an organization that deals with domestic violets, and they're looking for a little bit of money from the town of Andover, whatever we can contribute to them for 22, 23. I, this is my, like I said, I don't know what you, um, wanna do about that, um, simply say no, or does somebody discuss it, or I just don't know what the protocols are on this.
Well, personally, we're gonna have, we're gonna have meetings, so I would sit there and create a, you know, a folder of items that you want us to discuss at various meetings, and then we can sit there and identify if it's something that, that needs to be funded out of the town, or it needs to be funded out of personal charitable contributions, so.
I mean, I would, I would certainly encourage you to prioritize anything that's Andover based, you know?
Yes.
I mean, you, you can show them to us and, and um, I think the five of us can have a rational discussion on whether we want to include something like that in the budget now.
Sure, that's great, thank you.
Yeah. Um, does anybody else have anything related to the budget for Sherry before we move on to the item 11? I mean, so basically, we did nine B and 12.
Are we, um, are we? At some point, maybe, can we get a projection, maybe beginning of February, as to where we think we sit as far as budget, where we're over, under? I know, I think we were tracking slightly over budget with no surplus, so if that's still the case, can we kind of know that as we're going along?
Well, can I, I mean, let's just, we'll move to item 11.
Nah, I don't want it now, I'd like to get this when we get closer to.
No, I, I would like to just ask a basic question.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Where are the reports? Am I missing them?
Uh, I know the check registering stuff is down on like the the 163 or something like that.
So, even, so even if the reports are changing, you know, the reports start on page 124, 125.
Correct.
Alright, and, and Sherry, so what are the problems that you see that the Board of Selectment should, should be looking at and considering, and, you know, are problematic?
Are problematic?
Yeah, is there any accounts that we know are running, running low, or you think are gonna run low before the end of the year?
Well, I mean, you do have an over expenditure report, um, in that packet, is that correct?
Um.
Yes. Let me, can I share my screen? I'll show you the actual Excel spreadsheet with that, and that'll make more sense to you.
Go ahead.
Amanda, can I share?
Yeah, go ahead.
What page is it on, Eric?
Um, I don't know.
Oh, I see, hang on, I found it. 151 for anyone that's following along.
Okay, so these are the current over expenditures at this point. That's not necessarily everything that's likely to be over expended by the end of the year, which is, I think, what, what Jeff's uh, asked for. I don't have that at that point. Um, we can certainly put that together. Um, those are the major char- everything in yellow are things that need Board of Selectmen action. There, there are things that either by, uh, over expenditures that either you approve directly as a board, or that you approve and then go on to Board of Finance. The ones that I think we should consider that are large dollar items are, we're gonna be well over in vehicle maintenance on public works. And the reason that is, is we initially intended to fix the 2005 International Cloud Truck um, as a capital expense, um, but because of the way we did it, um, we did a bunch of the labor ourselves, and then we sent it out for welding. Um, you know, and then we painted it. So the, the cost was considerably lower, we did that repair for about 10,000, whereas we were initially estimating a lot more than that. But the problem is, the only place we had to take it out of was vehicle maintenance, and that killed the vehicle maintenance line item.
Why wasn't taken out of the capital expense if it was budgeted that way?
Because it's not a capital expense, it's technically under 10,000, and that's not a capital expense. Um. And the Board of, Board of Finance has made several decisions to not take things out that are less than 10,000 out of capital expense.
Items that were budgeted? I mean, it's a budget, this is a budgeted capital line item, that's my question. I would understand if it's non-budgeted, but if it's budgeted and you ended up spending less than planned, why would you dump it into the budget, you know? Doesn't make any sense.
Well, I mean.
Do we have a total number that we think we're off by? Are we still within contingency?
Yeah, at this point, we're still well within contingency. Because there's a couple things that look like they're gonna come in under a reasonable amount.
But it means you, you've left money on the, uh, in the capital budget on our rolling cap, on our rolling capital for public works, is that what you're saying?
Yes, yes, but we're either gonna have to agree to an over expenditure, probably about 10,000 in vehicle maintenance, or because we were not anticipating taking that out of vehicle maintenance. And hey, maybe it's my fault for charging it to vehicle maintenance, and I should have gone after, you know, the finance department to approve it as a capital expense. Frankly, I did not, um, you know, based on some recent, you know, trends and what they were, they were approving. Um, or, so you either have to accept it as a overage, or we have to agree to recommend to the Board of Finance that that money gets transferred in from capital, which would be my suggestion.
So you have six months left and you're over expended by $1,300.
Correct.
I would, I would make the suggestion that we not make any transfers out of the capital until we see how close we're running for contingency. If we can override, if we can lap all this up in contingency and leave more money in capital, given what we've been spending at Public Works lately, let's leave it there. That would be my suggestion, if anybody has any comment.
I have no problem with that. So, I have no problem with that.
Okay?
I don't either.
I mean.
So let's, let's ride it out, if we, everything falls under contingency, then we don't have a rollover, great. And, you know, leave the money in the capital.
Okay, then at the end of this discussion, I'll need a motion to forward to the Board of Finance a recommendation to approve an overage of around 10,000 um, in vehicle maintenance line item.
Just make the motion now if you want.
Or you can do that.
I'll make a motion, uh, that we allow an overage, or ask the Board of Finance for an overage of approximately $10,000 to the vehicle maintenance line item.
I'll second that.
Okay, through the discussion? No further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Um, Paul, I believe that was all in favor.
Yep, I agree.
Alright. Is there anything else, Eric, that you, you want to send to the Board of Finance related to this?
Uh, not related to that, but everything in yellow are things that need to get uh, either approved by you or approved by you and passed on to, um, Board of Finance. So the first is, you know, we did go over on OT and public works, we're basically at our limit right now. Um, or even slightly over. Um, you know, presuming we don't get any real storm-related damage, I think we can live with an additional request of a couple thousand dollars, which puts it right at the limit where Board of Selectmen should be approving it, so I left that for you. Um, if you guys want to do that.
Let's go through all of them, so then we can circle back on them, so.
Sure.
The auditor issue.
So that has been pretty much solved. Basically, they booked in this year's budget, because we ended up uh, getting billed so late for last year's, um, we actually paid it after the close of the budget this year. Um, as did we pay some other previous, also the, the payout for the ACH fraud, the final payment frosted them. So we ran over quite a bit on that budget. The Sherry and the auditor have worked it out, so that will be booked correctly to the appropriate year. So we are not actually, and, and that change has been, I think, already made to the, uh, financials that you have. So that, that has gone away, that has been taken care of, um, by booking it in the correct year. So we can ignore that. Um. We have an issue with the equipment maintenance line item and the tax collector, and we're still trying to figure out exactly why. Um, the bills look correct, but it looks like we we have to do a little forensic research on this. The bills look correct. I, I think we've paid them correctly for what they're owed this year, but we either under budgeted it dramatically. Um, number one, or in previous years, it looks like we may have been booking the postage elsewhere that was applied, that was used to pay, uh, parts of the tax collector's mail. And that looks like that's what the issue is, but I'm not absolutely sure. Frankly, I'd like to look at that a little bit more before you guys make any motions. Um, the only reason why I want it on there now is because I want to remind myself of that as we're budgeting, that we have to get that right prior to the budget.
I did, can I just say one thing before you go on there? I did talk to, um, tax collector today, and she's still waiting for quality to hear back as to what her amount is gonna be moving forward into budget 22, 23. So I have a feeling there's a bit of a problem because they have not got back to her yet. And they're taking a long time, and the reason why I say this is because the assessor already has her amount, but the task collector does not, so I asked her to email them again and um, email me back an explanation as to what, why it's taking so long. And what is our amount for the tax collector? We need to know, we need to resolve this, so I'm hoping.
Sorry.
I'm hoping it will resolve it.
Do we have a contract, Sherry, with QDS?
I, we have invoices. I have not seen an actual contract. Um. This is how we get the quotes every year from so much for assessor and so much for tax collector. But I have not seen an honest to God contract.
Jeff, I don't think there's ever been, there hasn't been a contract in there that I can remember going back seven years. I think Sherry's correct on this.
Yeah.
So we have, so we don't, so we don't even get a quote, we just get invoices.
They'll give, they'll give us an estimate for the upcoming year.
Estimate in the front.
Right.
That's what we're waiting for right now.
But it's not fixed.
But it's not a fixed, uh, amount, and then the invoices start coming in.
Jeff, I think part of the reason it's not a fixed is a, a, a large fraction of the cost for that are mailing costs. And I'm not sure you really know that a year out. Um, cause you don't know what the post office is gonna charge from year to year.
Yeah, but I'm, I'm just driving at air, there's got to be, uh, the quote has to have, or, you know, the contract would have.
There is no contract.
I understand. But the quote would have how much per tax bill submitted, you know?
No. No, I don't think it does, I think it breaks it down, I think it just gives us a, a top number.
So they just I, you gotta look at that.
Yeah, I gotta, I gotta talk to somebody, right? Yeah, I gotta, I gotta talk to somebody right now. So.
You gotta remember too, we're, we're only one of two towns in the state of Connecticut that still does quarterly billing.
Yes, and I would assume Adrian that that, that doubles our mailing. That doubles our bill creation. So if they're charging us tax per bill, there's a certain rate per bill. And then obviously you have your mailing costs. So you're paying first class mailing from them. You know, I, I, I just, there's got to be a way for you to go back and calculate it. It's really what I'm vibing at. I'm just sitting there thinking it's got to come from someplace. Whether it's a quote or a contract, you gotta be able to calculate it backwards. So. And this is for last year. Anyway, it's not even for this year. You know, you're looking for the quote to go next year. This overcharges for. Current year we're in. Okay.
And the last one that, um, right now I wanna make you aware of, and we've already discussed it. Is the change to NICOG animal control services. If you take that line item as a whole, the one-five-one category for the dog fund. We're gonna be over by somewhere around three thousand dollars by the end of the year. We're not over now. But we will be.
So we, we ended up doing the Veterans Park stuff. Was that on overtime?
Some of it. I mean, we ended up running a little overtime at the end of the day to get it all in. Sure.
So it was one day, basically.
Uh, no. It tended to be working a little over on multiple days. I mean, remember, part of our issue was. We were trying to get that done in re- and in as fast as that we could. So the seed would establish. And we had, had to work around the electrician. And since the electricians don't necessarily just work eight hour days, you know, there were times where we were. We worked a bunch of days where they worked an hour or two overtime, you know, as a crew to get.
Everybody did.
And so if we get stuck with bad storms, Eric, you're gonna, you're gonna go over that. That number more, or are we taking it out of the plowing budget?
Well, I mean, the, the, the problem with the plowing budget is the board of finance decreased. The overtime allotment for winter storm removal from twenty-five down fifteen. Now, in truth, the last two years, that has been enough. But if we have a bad winter, no, that's gonna be problematic.
We don't know that yet though, so.
Right, that's what I'm saying. It's. You know, the, the likelihood of us going over is more than it has been in years past. But I mean, maybe it will be under in snowplow. Possible.
Okay, so of these items, which, which other items do we need to send to the board of finance?
So, a- as of tonight, the one you probably ought to do would be. Um, I would do OT for public works. The rest of it, and if you wanted to do the dog fund. You could do the dog fund just to get it out of the way. You don't actually have to send that to. Board of Finance, cause that's in the range where just you guys can approve.
Well, according to the sheet you just gave us, for this approval, you can approve the two thousand, the overage, so. You don't.
I could. I mean, I figured that was right at, so I would get, put it in your bailiwick.
Nope, it's in yours. Two thousand. We're good. Moving on.
Okay.
Are there any other? Issues from the reports that we should look at, Sherry? Town aid road?
No, I think town aid road is good. I did give you an update on that. With a balance that we have in there is ninety-two thousand, eight hundred and eighteen.
Page one thirty-eight.
Yeah. Ninety-two thousand remain.
Yep.
We still have a payment coming in though, right? In spring?
Yes, one more. I believe it's around nine, three or so.
Yeah, we should have a payment at some time in January that, that was part of the, the governor's last bond approval package. So, uh, at least the January, the normal January payment is funded. The next one would come in July.
Yeah.
Or August.
And Eric, we've received the steep grant for. The work to be done on Shoddy Mill and Long Hill.
We don't have the physical funding. But we have the approval for it. We won't actually get the money until we've actually picked a contractor and gone through all the paperwork for that.
And the timing on that required to be done by?
Well, I mean, it really comes down to one of the things I'm working with Jay right now is can they realistically do the drainage? Or do we have to sub out the drainage to get that done and paid to this year? Um, we're still working on that frankly.
When will you know that answer?
Hopefully he and I can have a more complete plan of what we're doing in the next month, month, month to six weeks.
But I think we as a board have to be more aware of side projects, you know? So we don't drag them off of that stuff.
Yeah, and I will send to all the board members what Jay sent me today.
Jay, Jay asked it to be forwarded, so I did.
Okay, I mean, I wasn't gonna force, forward that to the board until tomorrow because. You had a policy of not wanting to get info at the last minute, so.
I just, it said forward, so I did.
Okay.
My mistake.
No, that's okay.
It, can, can they work on the drainage this winter? If it's not, I mean, not as cold as it's gonna be tomorrow, but.
No.
Now when the ground is actually frozen.
Jay thinks. I understand that. I, I. I do understand that if it's frozen, you can't work in it, but you know, it hasn't been frozen in a long time in Connecticut. Last year, I think we had, you know, a week of frozen conditions, which were really early in the season. And I'm, I'm just asking if it's not frozen, can they work on the drainage?
Well, how bad do you want to work on? They can work on if it's frozen, if you wanna buy them a space heater.
No, 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 I don't, I don't, I don't wanna work. I, I'm asking a question, Eric. That's all.
Jay told me he thought they could begin working on it. You know, if they pushed it, they could start working on it somewhere mid to third week in March.
Is it mostly side work or is it cross drainage?
Uh, a lot of it's cross drainage.
So I was gonna say the side work drainage you could do with a heater. You know, throw a tarp there, heater, you know, you run it for an eight-hour shift. It's thawed. You're good to go. You know?
And, and what's the reason that they can't work until mid-March?
Cause it's frozen?
If it's not frozen, if it's not frozen.
Well. Part of the problem with working in the spring when it's really muddy. Is it just doesn't compact really well when it's really wet. That's part of the issue for working early.
Well, on your patches, you're gonna, you won't, you'll have to do soft patches too. Your cold patches, you won't be able to do any. Regular patching.
Correct.
And some of the places have limited hours as well, you know? It's harder to get material. I can tell you that. Target does not stock half the things you're gonna want.
To Adrian's point, Eric. Side projects need to be minimized next year to get as much of this done as possible. So. I think the entire board would like to see as much of that work done as they possibly can get out and not have them get dragged off.
And, and I'll say candidly now, before we get into that discussion, I've encouraged Jay to put another person in his budget. Contrary to his, he sends out an email and I forwarded to you guys, so I called him to talk to him about it. You know, he wasn't asking for it, cause he doesn't, he didn't think it would get funded, but I, I told him, if you need it, you put it in there, you know? I mean, we're, we're putting a lot of work on his plate and he's running around trying to keep tabs on that stuff and. Be on top of, you know, the crew. It's hard to do that if you're working as part of the crew, you know? And if we're gonna have five to 10 years worth of drainage work ahead of us. That's, that's a smart decision to do now, you know? Cause eventually Tommy's gonna retire and we would be there and have somebody in there now that's trained up. And then, you know, maybe you. Reduce the crew through attrition as you catch up on some of the drainage, you know?
Well, let's discuss that. That's one of the items that we will need to discuss as far as funding, additional funding requirements. So.
Yep.
We'll bring that up in our budget workshops. Okay. Is there anything else in the item eleven that we wanna discuss?
Well, I would just like to point out one thing. If you had a chance to look at the. Two thousand twenty-two detailed custom expenditure report from Edmonds. I did change it slightly in the hopes that. The columns would be to your liking.
What, what page are we on now?
I don't know the page, but.
Any sixty-seven through one thirty-seven. It's not that big. It's, uh, I'm sorry. Page tw- one twenty-seven.
One twenty-seven, yeah, found it.
Okay. So, um, I eliminated the expenditure current. And just putting in the expenditure year-to-date. With the adopted budget. The balance, and then, um, they do have a percentage use now. Which is another column that we can put in there to rely upon. I didn't know if that was something that you wanted me to work towards, you know? Putting it that way, or you have any other suggestions that would make it. Better. We now can put it into Excel, the actual report. And I can share it with. You know, boards in Excel fashion.
So we have the Excel export working now?
Yes, yes. I, I got on the phone the other day with, um, help desk and they. Made sure that I was able to do it and I am.
Outstanding.
So we have that feature now and we can, I can actually. Send it to, um, a board in Excel. Um, after I produce it in this format here. So that I, I know you indicate, well, some board members, um, board of finance indicated. They wanted it in Excel, um, spreadsheet fashion, so they could make notes on the side. And keep track of things as they went along.
Our, our assistant treasurer line is for salary is at sixty-three percent. Are we, is that because of OT or? Or just the way the weeks fall? It just seems like a bunch of the other ones are at fifties and then all of a sudden we're, hers is at sixty-three percent.
There might be some overtime in there. I'd have to take a look at it and see what is driving that.
Thank you.
I just wanted to point that out that we're making progress in that area. Of reporting. Thank you.
Sherry, thank you. Uh, any other questions for Sherry or before she leaves us, I'm sure? Okay. Item twelve on the budget appropriation transfers and over expenditures. I believe that was what Adrian played on previously. One fifty-something. One fifty-one. So those are everything we talked about already. So we don't have to waste any more time on that. Okay. Alright, Sherry, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. We're gonna move back up to item five, appointments. Are there any appointments for Memorial Day committee, Eric?
Not that I know of.
Alright, uh, the citation hearing officer, do we have anyone step forward?
Uh, we did. I'm gonna suggest you appoint Mark Rysley as the here citation hearing officer.
Do we have anything? How long has he been in town? What's his background? I saw the letter, it didn't say much, so.
Yeah, I had a conversation with him. He's only been in town a couple of years, um, but he's at the. He, he was specifically looking for something that he could contribute to the town. You know. You, you know, we had a long discussion about, you know, what constitutes fairness and, you know, how you judge and weigh in on a situation and. And I thought he was, he would be a good applicant for that position.
And just as a side question, you sent us an email on that. It's not in the package, his letter?
No. It's separate.
Separate.
Okay, does anyone wanna make the motion to appoint him right now, or would you guys like to hold off and have this for next month?
No, it's making a, making a motion right now to appoint him.
You're gonna make that motion?
Yeah, I was looking for his correct spelling of his name and that. I was going to my inbox, sorry.
I, I just got a quick question before we do that. So. I don't know when this, we got another word document saying there was somebody else that had interest. Did they not send a letter in?
So. They, you know, there, there were a total of three or four people. That expressed interest in either doing that or the citation hearing officer. So between those and, and the ones I talked to, I kinda thought as a fit for. The citation hearing officer, Mark was probably the best fit. And that the remaining ones, you know. Would work reasonably well for the Andover Ethics Committee.
So you had Amy March, Janice Machete, Machete? And then Tammy Harrington were the other people that wanted to do it, but you think Mark's the best fit?
Uh, yes, that's kind of the feeling I got from discussing with them.
So I will make a motion that we, uh, appoint Mark Rysley to the citation hearing officer. And appoint Jake Hammons, Amy March, Janice Marshy, if I'm saying correctly, I hope. And Tammy Harrington to the Ethics Commission. And Amber Armitage to the Emergency Management Coordinator.
I'll second.
Okay. I think. Yeah, that works. The only thing I would say is that. One of the four for the Ethics Committee has to be an alternate. Because a commission is three regular members and one alternate.
So who's your alternate?
I just kinda picked it out of a hat and said Amy Marsh would be the alternate.
So I would modify my motion that Amy Marsh will be appointed as an alternate. Still seconding Paula?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, further discussion on any of these, uh, appointments? All those in favor?
Bye.
Okay. So that appears to take forth all of the appointments. And Amber, thank you very much for, for. The Emergency Management Coordinator. Appreciate it. Resignations, item six. Anything, Eric?
No.
Okay. Uh, okay, let's go to item seven, the town administrators report starts on page eighteen.
Okay, I assume I can share my screen again?
Yes.
Alright, I'm only gonna go over the stuff that's changed since I put out this report originally. Um, you guys all know the COVID cases are continuing to climb. Since the beginning of December, we've gone from about four hundred and twenty people hospitalized to just about nineteen hundred today. I think you guys have probably all seen the governor's executive orders. Really liberalizing, uh, the state of medicine today to try to deal with it because they're so short-staffed. Um, the good news is every place that we've seen a spike worldwide. Due to the Omicron virus, it appears to be fairly short-lived, so you can expect that to tail off pretty fast. Um, starting sometime this month or certainly by next month. That's that. We are having problems with the furnace in the community room. Bringing the guy back in tomorrow to service worked great for a couple of weeks. Again, it clicked up the last time they refilled the tank. Uh, so I think we've either got something with the wrong with the filter or the pump going up to the furnace that keeps causing a problem. So we're gonna try to get to the bottom of that. Uh, it just stops working.
Okay. And we had our service done, the filter was changed, we're still having a problem?
Yes, yes.
Something in the tank?
I don't know. I mean, it's possible we're stirring up junk in the tank when they fill it. You know, it's possible the pump that pumps it up, you know, from the basement to the second story is not working correctly. I don't know what the solution is. But we gotta get.
Are we shutting that, we shutting the furnace off when they're loading?
No.
You might want to consider that. Only because we're running it so low, you know what I mean? We're running it so low that when they're filling, you're gonna have, you're gonna stir stuff up. You can't help it.
Eric, how often is it filled, filled?
Once a week, right?
Cold every seven days.
So you would think that Adrian, you would think that there wouldn't be anything, that it all would be in the filters.
But it's not. I mean, it can't be just that because it's happening too often. You know, unless the filter's actually just clogged again and that's part of the problem.
I wouldn't bet against it.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's possible that's the case. I'm, I'm not betting against it either. I'm just saying the guys should be here tomorrow to uh, work on it again.
Great.
Okay, transfer station, uh, we, one of the switches to the compactor that the town owns, the switch um, burned out or had some sort of issue. So Lenko came out and diagnosed it and fixed that uh, last week. You know, just as an emergency service.
Yep.
Uh, so you had asked me for what the cost of replacing or, or putting in a uh, electric thing for the overhead door. So the total would be about eight hundred and thirty dollars, broken down into five hundred and forty-five parts and two eighty-six in labor. But they also said we would need the electrician to put an outlet in for it. Um, that's for advanced overhead door. So if you want to, if that's something you want to go ahead with, I'll be happy to uh, to send that.
And that's for the, that's for the side building, right?
Yeah, that's for the blue building.
Blue building.
I think that's a bargain.
Yeah, doesn't seem out of line, that's for sure.
No, I think that's a bargain and that gives us covered space. Let's do it. I'd make a motion for that. What's your total?
Uh, eight thirty.
There's no electrician's cost in that yet, though.
Correct. One outlet and we got power in that building anyways, right?
Right.
Lots of power.
I would make a motion that we uh, accept the proposal from advanced overhead door and install the garage door accordingly.
I'll second.
Further discussion? Anyone? Scott, you bro?
I'll set.
Okay. All those in favor?
Hey, do we want to amend that motion a little bit to, for about for the electrician or no?
Uh, if you want, do you want to amend it so that you want, do you want?
We're doing a fix amount. We're not doing anything for the outlet.
Right, I mean, presumably we're gonna use Lenko and just whatever it's gonna cost, it's gonna cost.
I would, if you want to amend the motion, definitely make, make it how you want to amend it and I'll second it.
No, as long as we have funding for the electrical work, I'm fine with it. I just want to make sure we have that part covered.
This is gonna be, uh, uh, where are you gonna get the money from, Eric?
General building maintenance fund.
To include costs, uh, I'll amend the motion to include cost for installation of uh, one outlet.
I'll second that, Adrian.
You, you, you don't want to sit there and have two outlets, Adrian?
No.
All right, Scott, seconded it. Uh, all those in favor? All right.
Okay, next up, I want to have a quick discussion with you. I'm not expecting anything tonight. You got plenty of time to think about it. I'm just putting the seed in your mind.
Saying already.
Is that we have, uh, we're part of Midneurak. Midneurak is a basically a recycling consortium that the town of Andover is part of. They handle our hazardous waste removal. Um, and then they renegotiate contracts for a whole bunch of recycled materials that we get rid of through our transfer station. There's a couple of things we don't recycle now that we could if we chose to that could potentially be cost neutral, but the problem is is that we need a reasonable place to store a quantity of. The first is propane tanks. We can get paid for used propane tanks as long as the majority of them are the standard barbecue twenty pound sized tanks.
Do the valves have to be removed?
The valves do not have to be removed.
Okay.
So the problem with that is that really needs, because of the nature of propane, that needs outdoor storage. So we would need a caged area of some sort to put the propane tanks if we were to choose to do that. Uh, the second thing would be to accept automotive batteries. Um, I'm not sure there's really a huge need for it. It's not something I've got questions on. I've gotten plenty of questions on propane tanks, but nobody's asked me about batteries yet, but if we did take batteries, we would end up getting paid about five bucks a battery. But we need a, a spot big enough to store at least fifty.
Yeah, I, I don't know that we need batteries because not only do they charge you way more than that for your deposit, your core deposit, but John Scrap will pay you more than that if you bring him down to him, so.
But, but John's is out of business now, Adrian.
Is he, since when?
He's done.
When did it go? Okay, I was just there like five months ago.
Yep. So were we.
No.
Scrapyard is no longer in business.
Wow. That sucks.
Yep.
Uh, uh, it probably won't be a lot of batteries because Adrian's right, they usually have to pay a deposit, a core charge.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I agree, you know, it's not necessarily something, you know, maybe we decide we don't want to do. I mean, we've never done it in the past. I was just looking at recycling things we actually potentially make a little bit of money on if we offer that.
So, so propane tanks, you want an outside cage for that?
Yeah, it really should be outside.
Can it be a basket rather than a cage? Or do you want to lock them up?
I don't necessarily think we need to lock them up. Um, they're not so valuable that I'm worried about people stealing them. But I do think we don't want to store, we want to store them in some kind of you know, enclosure that's lockable at the end of the night. Um, and it's not an enclosed building, so there's no chance of, of, you know, propane explosion.
Why are we worried about locking them up? I mean, they're gonna have to cut a lock to get in there to start with, with the cut, one, they're gonna cut two.
Let, let, let's sit there and, and say we don't lock them up. My question to you, Eric, how many requests are we truly having for this type of service at the transfer station?
Um, I, over the years, I've had a bunch of people call and ask me what they have to do to get rid of their propane tanks. So I would bet we get twenty a year, but it's not gonna be.
If you bring them a scrapyard, you gotta take the belt. They won't take them without the belt, though.
So, right.
And the average homeowner doesn't want to do that. How many do we need, though, for them to take them?
Uh, I think to get paid for it, we need at least eighteen twenty pound tanks for them to haul it away.
So you might only have one, one run a year.
Yeah, it's not gonna be big. That's why we need a bunch, you know, a bunch to store. I mean, we can get it, have, they will take it away for lesser amounts, but then we have to pay.
Well, let's see if we can find a, like a material basket or something. Like, you know, those metal cages that uh, that have a um, a skid on the bottom built in.
Is that gonna hold eighteen, though?
Heck, yeah. Yep. You get at least eight per layer. Should be able to get three layers. It's twenty-four. Be close. I mean, I'm guessing eight, but it should be close.
So I take it that's something that you would consider if we could find a low-cost storage mechanism?
Yeah, except John Scrap is close. I mean, I think a lot of people utilize some of those facilities and stuff like that. Is there anything else on your list?
Uh, not for that. I just wanted to say we uh, up to this point, we've been running plain salt on the road, but as it gets colder, we're about to switch back to treated salt. Um, we did end up finding, signing a contract with Cargill because Cargill eventually came down to a reasonable cost per ton for salt. So um, we're able to buy treated salt again reasonably, so that's good. And the last thing I wanted to say, you know, for this section is that there will be a meeting next weekend or next week, January nineteenth at ten AM. A design meeting with Close Jensen and Miller. They're gonna give us the initial uh, a design presentation. And then there'll be a second one on February ninth, which is the full-blown design review with with the Department of Transportation. So Board of Select members are encouraged to attend the first meeting, but you're more than welcome to attend the second one also.
So you can send us out some emails so that we remember, Eric?
Uh, I can. I was planning on sending you the link to anybody who said they wanted to actually, likely wanted to go.
So that's a Zoom meeting?
Correct.
At ten AM, the nineteenth?
Correct.
So Scott, if he sends you the link, you can put a notice on your thing to remind you on that day?
Yeah, yeah, I can, I will.
On your town email.
So do all of you want the link?
Sure.
Sure.
Okay. And I already sent you uh, the proposal. I sent that to you, or not the proposal, the kind of their report roughly two weeks ago or three weeks ago. Do you all still have that?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
Cost went up, we saw that.
Yep. And then that's it unless um, I have some more stuff about the VoIP, but we'll get to that when we get to that in the meeting. Unless you have questions for me on my report.
I see that Lynn, I see Lynn's getting some more trending with permit link. Are we still talking about sending her out to another town as well?
Um, no, neither she nor Kathy felt that they really needed to go there for that. They are you know, obviously in regular contact with both Randy and they have a good working relationship with the woman in Ashford. Okay, as it is.
So what's the status on the, on the two properties that didn't have dumpsters? Have we heard back from our building official yet?
I have not. Nor have I really reached out and asked immediately.
Can we follow up on that? Because it's starting to annoy me. It's been like a while. The one on sixty-six has been quite a while. And then Long Hill, obviously, is definitely an issue for residents. We've been hearing a lot of complaints.
Where are those two, Adrian?
Uh, one is on Route Six and the other one is on Long Hill. And the building, building department has been given both of those. I think Kathy had talked about reaching out to call them herself, Eric. So he, she could kind of get Lynn in practice for doing that. To remind them that they, as part of their building permit, they are required to have a dumpster as a first step.
Yep.
But obviously, I, we'd like to have them doing it and then also having the building official follow up.
Well, I think that's actually more zoning violation. Well, maybe it's both.
No, it's, though, well, they're, they were issued a building permit. It's on the building permit, so it's required. It's under.
It's only on the building permit now. It wasn't on the building permit when we issued it. We were just able to get permit link to update our building permits to show that on there.
Supposedly they were stamping them before. When, when they mailed them out.
Okay, maybe.
That Kathy had a stamp. I said to do both because now if you look at the one on permit link, it's, it's so, it's written so small. It's too easy to miss. So I asked her to stamp them anyways, unless anyone has objection.
But they're not mailing them. They're getting to them electronic. So I don't.
No, they mail, they mail them once they're approved and they've gone through the whole process. That's what I was told. If it's something different, let's find out.
Uh, I mean, they shouldn't be mailing them to them. They should come up automatically. That's the whole reason we're going to an electronic permitting system. So you're not mailing stuff. You know, it gets to you electronically.
Okay. Well, let's find out because she said they were stamping them, so.
And so if the case, if Eric, if you're gonna send them out electronically, you need to figure out a way to make it bigger so they understand.
Well, or change the coloring on it because it's black. It's, it's, it's very small. It's a black, it's a black type. Change it to red, something.
Okay. Any other questions for Eric? Okay. Uh, so let's move on to item eight, old business. Discuss and act upon the following. Is there anything related to the Veterans Monument Park upgrades?
I have one thing. Um, Jerry was worried about getting those trees cut down and nobody would cut them down for him. So I went down and marked them. All the trees that he wanted to cut down and then I got Jason from Distinctive to do it for free for the veterans. And then I went and got Dave Buckley down there and he okayed it. He's from the DEP. So that's all set and all paid for.
Wow, thank you, Scott. That's awesome.
We should, have we talked about doing anything to have a list of people that donated?
Yeah, we're gonna put it on the sign. Eric's gonna be making the sign up.
Okay. I mean, if that's the case, let's make sure Distinctive gets on there too.
And, and Jerry's gonna buy uh, Jason a brick also.
Okay.
So that's, you know, no money out of the town's pocket.
Great job, Scott.
Thank you, Adrian. It's nice, it's nice for people to say thank you. It really is.
So are we still planning on making public works, clean that whole area up and flatten it off and change the manhole cover?
We'll, 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 we're gonna cross that bridge when we come to it.
And they have time as long as they're not in overtime.
It's frozen.
Yeah.
Frozen. Yep.
Okay, so we're gonna move on to item B, eight B Connectivity Grant Construction Progress. Eric?
Uh, no construction now until spring, so we can drop that for now.
All right, eight C, the electrical and HVAC upgrades at the town hall, are these addition to what you discussed?
Uh, there is, but I don't want to discuss them now because none of the contractors have actually gotten me hard numbers, so I don't have anything to say.
Okay, are we talking about doing that for budget or?
No, we're talking about doing that right out of the building maintenance fund.
Okay.
All right, so we talked about the eight D, the transfer station. You have anything else you want to add?
No, those were my two items for the transfer station.
Eight E, the formation of the museum Andover History Committee. We did that last meeting, correct?
Yep, and we are starting to put that out there to the public for people that want to be a part of it. They can send in a letter and let us know.
Okay. Eight uh, F, pedestrian safety initiative?
That's Mr. Murray.
I am still waiting to hear about our transfer of funds. Apparently that those funds were never transferred that we. Apparently that those funds were never transferred that we spoke about over six months ago.
Okay, do they know where the funds are, Jeff?
Um, so we had those, we had the running events and we had the bike events and and there was no. Good, they said there was no dedicated um account for the rec commission.
Mm-hmm.
I've asked the board of finance. I actually sent Diane and I sent Diane and a few others an email asking them to look into it at their next meeting.
I answer, Cat, can you tell us, is there any update on that?
I have no idea because I'm sure he wasn't at our last meeting, so um. We could about at this meeting, find out where everything went, because I do remember that we said we're going to transfer the money in.
Yeah, that was supposed to happen a while back and um.
Right.
Yeah, we're just, the, the, the money was just run to the town in Andover and put in the, our general account. It was never assigned in, to, to any specific.
Line item?
Yeah, line item. So we, we want to make sure that that money eventually gets there so we can use it for these vests and other, other initiatives.
You know. Diane, do you have the, do you have the amount? Did Jeff give you that?
Yeah.
Yeah, it was right around twelve hundred dollars.
Wow.
I mean, that money would have gone rolled into the, into the unexpended fund balance probably two years ago. Um, so I mean, the only thing you can practically do at this point is just decide to spend, you know. Twelve hundred dollars on X. Practically.
Just put it on the line item for next year's budget.
Well, we should, there, we have it in the next part that we have it, that account created and funded.
Yeah. But it shouldn't be funded from, it should be funded as a transfer, not, not from. Taxpayer line item.
Right, right.
Got you, got you.
So, and from a practical point of view, can we just get the board of finance to, to transfer twelve hundred dollars and do it? Wherever you guys want to stick it, Jeff?
Yeah, we will need to create a rec commission, you know, events account or rec commission account.
I mean, where, where you're at, what you're talking about doing is creating essentially a permanent fund. And then transferring in a small amount of money to that permanent fund. Um, and leave that as a spot where future donations can be assigned to.
Right. Jeff, I, I have a solution. Mr. Murray?
Yes.
I haven't spent my. Uh, my uh, my, my pay this year, so let's have that transferred to the rec commission. Diane, so Cat, can you transfer my selectmen pay to the rec commission so they can have the money for Jeff to get the best?
So let me ask you a question. If I recall correctly, and I haven't. I thought that the first selectmen salary item on the current budget sheet there has been expended. It shows up reports, so I don't know where that money went.
So the first selectman, let me look back at.
Go look at the expenditure report.
Oh, yeah, you're right. The first page, it's the first page of the admin's report. I don't know how that got expended, or mine got expended because I didn't do anything with it.
So I was, that was like one of my questions, like. That has never shown that big of a number going out, so. I don't know what happened.
Hmm. Hmm.
Got me.
Unless they booked last year, I gave them one, for last year, I gave it to the um rec commission for their tent. Unless they.
Right, but it wouldn't have been that dollar amount because it, didn't it just, isn't it? Almost all the selectmen salary out of that account now?
Yeah, it shouldn't be though. It shouldn't be.
Doesn't look right.
Which is, Eric, the same issue that you really should address for the tax collectors fees. It almost looks like a duplicate invoice. Uh, Diane, that's a good question, like why, first of all, why would it be forty-three hundred dollars?
Yeah. And, and ninety percent expended when we're on a quarterly.
Yeah, so.
Well, I, I don't, I, I haven't taken it. So like Scott or Jeff or Paula. Have you guys gotten your checks?
Yeah.
Did you still, had you got half the year or?
Did you get twelve hundred?
No. It was probably processed it twice.
Yeah, so something's wrong there.
Well, that's, that's even a bigger problem, Diane, because it went through. So, so what that means to me is that they duplicated the journal entry.
Right.
So. Oh, Eric, uh, which, which, which if you want to keep going and we want to keep talking about that, which means that the reconciliation is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That expenditure report should be looked at before it even comes to any of these meetings, that every variance should be explained.
Yeah, so you keep asking the same, I mean. Yeah.
Eric, if you need me to sign off on that, let me know. I originally signed off on last, on the year before, but I didn't get a sheet for last year, but I think Carol Lee took care of it. Eric, your list is getting bigger and bigger.
I mean, I, I, I can only tell you from my, the past, the past history of, of our town. Um, we should set up a permanent. Fund for donations, I, in, in, even if it's a separate checking account. I know nobody wants to hear that, but the, there has been.
But then you're gonna have somebody saying, well, we donated, it's in the account, we want that money, and then somebody else saying, no, no, it's our money, we donated, so.
I, I understand, but and, and I do agree that there's the, the rec commission because. I, I just, I just know it's not done correctly. You know, you have the rec commission getting funds from basketball or any.
Yeah, I mean, the rec commission should have a, 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 a money raised line, you know, and a, and a donated line.
Yeah, fun, right. Yeah.
And, and I can, I can tell you in understanding from what I've seen is that a lot of donations have come into the town and been. Um, pushed into the general fund and not used for the appropriate reason.
Right.
But.
And circling back to my original uh this discussion, I just, I want to make sure that that's ready for the future because. We've had promoters like Ken Platt come in here and have that summer series and he wrote us a nice check.
Yeah, so let, let's correct. Let's correct it on the budget, Jeff.
What's that?
We'll correct it on the rec budget. We'll, we'll get both of those things added in.
Okay, and what about, yeah, what about transferring existing funds? Is that just kind of gone or are we just gonna, uh, are we gonna address that?
Well, what, we get, my salary's twelve hundred, so that'll be the same amount, so that we don't worry about where it comes from.
All right, but we're, but we're glossing over a problem that should be able to be solved by the treasures department, which. Where is the, the listing of all deposits that have been made into our bank?
That's a, that's a whole, yeah, that was.
And listen, it, it should never be that hard. It's, I mean, especially the checks we're talking about. The checks we're talking about are checks that are actually physical checks that come into the possession of the treasurer's office.
Well, we, we know what the problem is. Unless we have a solution, let's move on. It's almost nine.
Okay.
Wow, let him finish his thought.
Yeah.
Adrian is a hundred right, Paula. It's nine o'clock. Let's go.
He's gonna fall asleep soon, Paula.
Sure, okay, so.
I mean, Amber woke up. She's, she's alive now. I thought she was out for.
Moving on to new business, Adrian. If you would stop talking. So, uh, we did eight, nine A, we already talked about the COVID status. We did nine B, we're done with that. Nine C, Eric has some issues he wants to discuss related to the VoIP system.
So I sent you again the copy of all three proposals. Um, let me just share my screen here real quick again. Where is it? Too many things open, hang on.
Well, hurry up, it's nine o'clock.
All right, if you want the long and the short of it is.
Yes, what do you want to go with?
If the next, over the next five years, smartest plan to do is to go with IP Genie. It's the same solution Hebron's using. It's the same solution Ram is using. Um, it is.
How much?
There, it's about seven grand for all the initial setup. And then our costs go down to roughly four hundred and ten dollars a month. From present, which is we're running rest roughly a thousand dollars a month now.
So you're gonna go from how much to how much? Say it again.
So that's why I'm trying to bring up my spreadsheet.
So, so I, I'll do the math. So he's gonna save six hundred dollars a month, which is seventy-two hundred dollars, and he's gonna spend seventy-two hundred dollars to buy.
You're gonna, you're gonna get it back to us in a year.
Yes, and the next year, you're gonna be able to reduce your, your, your. Your X-line expenditure of forty-eight hundred versus twelve thousand dollars, so do it.
So you want to make a motion to uh use IP Genie as our, as a voice provider?
I will, I will make a motion to sign a service order, their service contract with Genie Innovations. For seventy-one hundred dollars in non-recurring fees. Four hundred and nine dollars in a total, in a recurring monthly fee to, to update our VoIPs, go to a VoIP system.
A second.
Okay, further discussion. Anybody have any questions to, to Eric related to that? Move. No, okay, all those.
You owe me a coke, Eric.
I.
Fair enough.
I.
Diet.
I.
I.
Okay, um, uh, nine D, resolution for Connecticut Department of Energy Services.
Okay, so real quick, um, we should have done this multiple months ago. We kind of screwed up. I don't know where we dropped the ball. Um, anyway, we didn't do it. Basically, what it is, is annually, we, uh, annually or every two years, we sign a agreement. Which allows the, our regional department of emergency management to get the federal funds. That would be allocated for the town for emergency management, and in exchange, they provide a series of services. Um. That's basically what it is. Um, I can't technically sign it without the board signing a resolution authorizing me to sign it. Um, because technically, that is giving away in some senses town funds, even though it's not actual town money. But per what the Board of Selectment has signed already, authorizing me to accept and distribute grants, that doesn't really count. So I would like you to verbally agree to sign the authorization and then I'll come in and sign the authorization. Uh, so I can sign the document. Okay, that's it. Questions?
Now, let's go make a motion to authorize Eric to sign the resolution for the Connecticut Department of Emergency Services.
Second it.
Let's go.
Second it.
All those in favor?
I, I.
I. All right, uh, nine E, grant of covenant and easements on the La Testa, La Testa Acres.
Okay, so as you know, a, a few years ago, we, uh, the Planning and Zoning Commission. Adopted a uh, what's called ARD or Andover Rural Design. And one of the things it allowed is it allowed in some cases. Um, more flexibility for the developer in exchange for leaving more open space on the property. So the problem is these developers have to put a covenant on the property, so it, it is clear in the land records that it is to remain open space. It's something that has to be signed by Jeff McGuire. It's a little unclear under regulations, but the whole board should be approving that. Or Jeff McGuire signing that, because we don't physically own the property, it doesn't have to go to a town meeting. I had that discussion a while back with the town's attorney. So, um. I don't know whether the board wants to just authorize Mr. McGuire to sign that. Um, and sign them all in the future, or whether the board wants to see those things. It's in your pack.
I'm going to, the board needs to see these things.
Jeff, Eric, I read that document this afternoon. And there's a part in there that says that before any work is begun on that site that. The pins and the, all the easements have to be. Um, noted in the field with oak stakes. And it explains the whole thing, and all the pins have to be on this, on the parcels everywhere before any work can start. So I talked to Jeff about that this afternoon, and he doesn't know whether or not any of that has been done. So I would advise Jeff not to sign anything until we're aware of everything on there is accurate.
Is it accurate or not?
It's, it, as, as far as we know right now, I, I, I talked to Jed and he said it's not. He doesn't, he doesn't know, he doesn't have an answer. That's, that's something I have to talk about a little later in our meeting.
Okay, so if that's something that we can, Eric, does it need to be signed today?
It's a zoning matter. I, the answer is I have no idea.
Okay, so why don't we get the answer on that and then? Well, heck, and they're probably not gonna do anything to it, so let's bring this back up in old business next month. Right? Uh, nine F, renewal of tax abatement for Hopperver Homes and the softball field renewal. Um. Are we at five years already? There's no way. We, we went out fur on that, farther on that. That was like a ten-year.
It was ten, and then it turned to five for some reason.
Why is it five?
I, I don't know. And the last one wasn't signed, was it, Eric?
Well, I don't, I don't think, I don't think we, we ever got there the leaseback from ladies. But.
There's two interrelated questions here.
Yeah.
Three questions. The first is, do you want to even bother using that field? That's number one. Number two, are you willing to give the housing complex an abatement? And if so, what method for determining compliance with our regulations? Uh, do you, how do you want to go about doing that? And then see if, if the answer is yes to both of those, then how do you want to go about renegotiating a new contract for the fee?
We, we, we have to get the, listen, there, there are requests for use of that field from Hammer Softball for Girls. And for also the. The baseball program in Hebron that Andover children participated. So we, we need to do that. Um, I'm gonna tell you, Eric, that you need to go back and evaluate what was passed at the town meeting because. I don't think it's, I thought it was ten years. Uh, we had a town meeting on this one. To give.
I, I have no, I mean, what I have from the town meeting is. There is an ordinance that's in place that takes it out of being a town meeting. And leaves it a Board of Selectment decision to uh abate certain tax. Um, based on a set of criteria, um, and I believe Bob Burbank signed the last one of those. In two thousand and seventeen.
I can't tell you when, I can't tell you when that was up, but.
We, let's, let's, let's stop discussing it. Let's ask Carol Lee, our resident, find everything you want to know about town meetings person to go digging for it.
Oh, Eric, Eric's just said that he already did that.
He said it was.
Eric said he had some, Eric said what he had in front of him. They didn't say whether he's added research. He said that it was done after the selectmen and not a town meeting.
So town's attorney would like to weigh in on this, I'm sure.
Dennis, you're awake.
Yeah, I, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes, oh, absolutely.
Oh, yeah, I'm here, yeah.
What's past is bedtime.
Yeah, this was, this was, uh, this is something that, I'm talking about the tax abatement. It's been going on for more than twenty years. And um, we, I took a close look at it in um, two thousand and seventeen. And discovered that it wasn't being done the right way. So we, uh, uh, we had a town meeting, was well-attended. Same town meeting at which you passed the uh Blight ordinance, or the town meeting did. And uh, yeah, it was in uh September nineteenth, two thousand and seventeen. We've talked to Carol about this. He pulled out a copy of the uh ordinance. And uh, it gives, it gives you, the ordinance gives you the standards that you have to follow. If you wanna give a tax abatement to a particular type of housing project that. Provides a nonprofit entity. Used solely for lower moderate income housing.
Is it seven or ten years Dennis? Is it seven year or ten year?
I believe that, I'm looking at the ordinance now, and I don't think the ordinance talks in terms of how many years. But the question is answered by the. Resolu-, what it does is it, as Eric said, it delegates to the. Through the Board of Selectmen, the authority to give the abatement. And what happened next was in Mar-, on March fourteen, two thousand and eighteen, another document. I have in front of me courtesy of Carol Lee and Eric. There was a resolution passed, giving an abatement of twelve thousand dollars. A year, beginning retroactively on June two thousand and seventeen. And extending until June thirty, twenty twenty-two. So the abatement extends through the end of this fiscal year. So it's time, I believe, to consider whether or not you're going to do this again. And you, the Board of Selectmen, under the ordinance has the authority to do this. I would suggest that I work with Eric to come up with a plan as to how we're going to do this, because in the past. It hasn't really been the, the. Well, I don't wanna call it an investigation, but the inquiry into whether or not. A, an abatement should be provided, and this is under a state statute. General statutes eight thousand two fifteen. The inquiry has been, I, I don't think it's been extensive enough.
Alright, well why don't you two work it out and get back to us then?
Yeah, work it out, get back to you, and then you, you have until, you know, the end of the fiscal year to make a decision. Hopefully the decision will be made, you know, well in advance of the end of the fiscal year, but that's. That's pretty much the way that, that the tax abatement goes. Yep.
And it's, there's wording in there that restricts the usage to. Young women. The wording needs to be changed to anyone. Or something close to that.
Oh wait a minute, you're talking, now you're talking.
Usage, the usage on the field.
Scott, you're talking, now you're, okay, now you're talking about the field.
The usage.
Okay, now I, I talked to Jeff about this today, Jeff McGuire. Because I believe the, the agreement made, that was going to be made between the town and the. Echo, the, the same organization we were talking about for the tax abatement. And, and it's not related. That, that was, that was something that, a, a contract was drafted. I believe the draft Jeff came from Echo. We made a suggestion for a change in, in paragraph twelve. And I don't think it was ever signed, is that right Jeff?
They were going back to the USDA, the last communication I have, and I don't, I don't see anything.
Okay, so.
So that board got never, they said they had to have it approved by USDA, which is a bunch of.
Well, that, that, that was, I, I, I found that to be, I, you know, I, at the same time. We look into the tax abatement, I don't, and I don't wanna relate them, you know, as, as a quid pro quo, because it shouldn't be. But, but at the same time, we could, or we could, Eric and I and whoever could. You know, find out if that's really a requirement, I, cause that, that, you know, if that's required, would it probably have to be in. Some sort of a regulation or some sort of a policy statement from the USDA, cause obviously that. Probably the farmer's home problem, program had something to do with the construction of that housing project, I would suspect.
It was the same landowner.
Pardon?
It was all the same landowner.
Oh yeah, for the, for the field and for the, right, 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 I get that, I, in fact, I was in the. Scott, I was in town hall a week and a half ago or so, was, was, maybe just a week ago with Eric and. I, I asked Eric to take me on a site visit. So we went up and took a look at it, because I'm very much interested in. Playing softball on that field if we could, because I do coach the Wyndham, the Willimantic team in that same. League that Hammer plays, and we played them many times. But, but most of the time we play them in Hebron, and a couple of times in Marlboro, and I'm. You know, as, as town attorney here, I'd love to play on the Andover field, I didn't take a good enough look at the field. Got to see if it was a softball field, you're talking about young women, softball field or a baseball field that. Yeah, as you know, I'm sure softball fields have a, a dirt or let's say clay infield.
Right, they, this one does.
Okay, that, that's what it looked like to me, in fact, I'm, I'm familiar with softball fields all over eastern part of the state. And to me, it looked like a pretty darn good field.
It, it is, it's got all new clay in it.
What we have to do is, what we have to do is, we have to. Eric, find out, I mean, in my recollection was it was a ten year thing.
Originally it was Jeff, but when it was redone, it turned into five years. At the meeting, was the five year document, I read it this afternoon.
Okay.
And when, and when that's redone Dennis, I wanna make sure that everyone can use that field. Not just young women, how about young men and how about adults, Jeff and me wanna play. Some, some game down there before we die.
I wanna see if you guys can hit the ball over the fence.
Yeah, I can hit the ball.
It would have to be a big.
Into the woods.
No.
Into the woods, okay.
Big floppy.
I don't, I'm a little older, I don't know, I, I'm a little older, and I, I think if I got the right pitch and the wind was blowing the right way, I could probably hit it over the fence.
Maybe we'll have a Republican versus Democrats, so.
We, we, or we could have a, we could have a home run dirt.
There you go Jeff, there you go.
We can raise money, we can raise money for the. Okay, Dennis, thank you very much.
I, I'll, I'll tell you what, I'll take this on. And I'm, I'm gonna consult with Jeff McGuire and with Scott and Eric, and we'll get this done.
Very good.
So.
Alright, so.
Very much interested in this, okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Nice to be here.
Thank you.
We have nine G, which is the item that I added to the agenda, which was a. The, the item is related to Andover Monthly Day of Plodging. I don't remember if you guys remember Eric's email that we received. Back about a month ago, when Eric was telling us that our revenues in town was increasing by about thirty five hundred dollars. Because the Andover Package Store has sold some upwards of. I think the number I was doing.
Ten million.
No, well that was for the whole state. But the town of Andover gets a number based upon the number of NIPS sold in the town of Andover. And there was about a hundred and seventy NIPS sold in the town of Andover last year Eric, about seventy thousand of them.
Right.
How many?
Seventy thousand, that translates to about a hundred and seventy-five NIPS are sold in the town of Andover per day. That's a lot. I think Adrian personally.
That's really like twenty drunk drivers though.
Yeah, but Adrian must be spending a lot of money down there. To buy his nip thing, but Eric sent something that interested in me and I had no idea about, so. I researched the term plodging. P L O G G I N G, and it is a Swedish. Exercise ritual that incorporates picking up trash. So what I am asking is that I'd like to make a motion that Andover dedicate, the, the Board of Selectmen dedicate the first. Sunday in each month is the Andover Monthly Day of Plodging to try to clean up our community. And dispose of the trash that is around the town. And that's all I'd like to do, cause Adrian is telling me now it's nine twenty and we have to move on. But that is what I would like to offer up is an opportunity for the town to get out there and to. Commit to picking up our town and making it look better.
How about like quarterly Jeff?
We can do quarterly, we can do monthly, I mean, it's not like, it's not like if we have the Andover Monthly Day of Plodging and I take pictures of the garbage bags. That I pick up from around the lake, that it's going to impact somebody doing it the following month on the first Sunday.
Yeah, that's true.
I mean, I'm sure Paula would get her on her neighborhood a little bit, I mean, doesn't even need to be a big bag of garbage, anything that somebody picks up is beneficial.
It is.
Would anyone like to second that? And if you'd like to make a quarterly day, if you'd like to make a quarterly day of plodging, I'm, I'm more than happy with a quarter. Anybody would like that amended to quarterly, monthly, whatever.
I'll second it Jeff.
No, is it quarterly or monthly? Paula, what would you rather it be?
Let's be ambitious and say monthly, what, what does everybody think?
Yearly.
Did Adrian say yearly?
Yes, he did.
Oh my god, no Adrian, yearly.
What's Jeff Murray think? Paula and I have church to go to, we can't be out cleaning up the town every Sunday.
It's not nice to lie on a, on a, on a call, my friend.
No, it's, it's okay, Adrian, Adrian, knowing that you don't need to go out and pick up the neighborhood. Is okay, so you can do your monthly.
I have enough property to pick up, I don't need to go pick up somebody else's.
So you know, that's fine, that's.
There seems to be a plethora of NIPS on my two hundred and forty feet of frontage.
The plodging police is not gonna come find you Adrian, if you don't do it, it's okay.
It's community service, and it's a cool term, so. That's, I, I, I'm gonna tell you monthly, let's just do it.
Okay, monthly.
Okay, monthly, so Scott seconded that, all those in favor of establishing the Andover Monthly Day of Plodging. Say aye, aye.
Aye.
Adrian, are you abstaining or?
I am abstaining, it's an exercise, I don't exercise.
So you don't have to tell us, we know.
Paula reminds me every chance she gets.
I do not.
Really? I remember putting on my shoes the other day where you commented on, oh wait, you forgot about that.
Goodness gracious, we're gonna move on right now, so we're moving to approval of.
I'm still in therapy.
Monday, for Monday, December thirteenth, twenty twenty-one, regular minute meetings, somebody like to make a motion to approve those?
A motion to approve those meetings.
Second it.
Yes, alright, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
We're moving on to reports, the tax collectors report, Eric, that starts on what page? I didn't see it. It starts on page one fifty-five. In the month of December, we collected four hundred and eighty-nine thousand eight hundred and thirty-one dollars and sixty-three cents. We still have to collect four million two hundred and eighty-nine thousand nine hundred and eighty-three dollars. That is related to what month? There is no month on that report. It's December, let's say it's the second page for December. There is one total refund to do of fourteen dollars and ninety-eight cents refund for an excess payment. Would someone like to make a motion to approve that, Eric, is that even in here?
Yes.
Other than that little number.
Is that motion to approve the following minutes, Monday, December thirteenth, it should be in the packet.
We already approved those Eric, I'm talking about the tax refund.
No, yeah, one blow at number thirteen. I motion to refund the excess tax payment for Jane Sylvester of fourteen dollars and ninety-eight cents.
Okay. Alright, I'll make a motion that we authorize the, the tax refund of fourteen dollars and ninety-eight cents to Jane Sylvester. Related to a refund of excess payment.
I'll second.
Alright, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
And then Jeff, if you could come in and sign that one and the one from the month before, which are still sitting in your inbox.
Sure, I would love to do that.
Excellent.
You know how excited I am about authorizing tax refunds for people.
I was gonna say, that is the first time I've heard you ever make a motion to authorize tax refund for the rest.
Because, that's because it is nine twenty-five, and we need to move on. So there's, the, there was no assessors report in this package, there are other reports. Does anyone wanna discuss any of the other reports that were submitted? Alright, the fire department and the, the police report, there are obviously some fatalities on Route Six over the last month. Very sad about that, and, you know. We would like our, our road to be as safe as possible. But we do appreciate all the hard work the fire department does to, to keep us safe and do the best job they can.
They do a great job.
Okay. I don't have any specific questions on any of the other reports. Okay. Correspondence, no correspondence, we're gonna do public speak before we move into executive session, so. Public speak, let's go through who we have left on our list, we don't have very many people left on our list, we have Diane Choquette, you're it. You are the heart of the public.
I'm all set, thanks.
Diane, thank you for everything you do on the Board of Finance, greatly appreciated.
Thank you Diane.
And Amanda, you're, you're also available, would you like to add anything to our? Our meeting?
No, thank you, but thank you.
Thank you Amanda, alright, so. Adrian, if you would make a motion to move us to executive session and invite in Eric, that would be great, and then.
Motion to move an executive session and invite Eric Anderson.
Okay, Amanda, if you could hand the controls to Paula, that way we can sit there and move forward. And Paula, once we get that done, you can stop recording and then go from there. Amanda, thank you very much for everything. If we can kick Nick off, or do we have to kick Nick off? We have to kick Nick off.
Yep.
Nick.
Yeah, I don't think that we need. Attorney O'Brien for this, so we can wish him good night.
Good night, bye bye.
Thank you Dennis, thanks Dennis.
Thank you all.
Alright, so the Board of Selectmen is coming out of the executive session at ten oh nine on Monday, January tenth. Back into our regularly scheduled meeting, and the last item. On the agenda is adjournment, would someone like to make a motion?
Pushing to adjourn.
Scott seconded that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Eric, thank you very much for everything.
You are, Eric. Eric, Eric, I'm gonna ask the Board of Finance, ask Diane to just, instead of trying to do a balance transfer as we go. Let's just run, run that line item to wherever it ends up and then do it at the end. You know.
Okay, alright, thank you very much everybody, you guys all have a nice night.
Peace.